Terrific, let's call the meeting to order. This is the December 6, 2018 Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. I would ask the Town Administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of any proposed changes right now, but we'll first vote to amend or approve the agenda if there are any, and then a public comment period in consideration of consent agenda and the next meeting of December 20, 2018, joint appointment with the Board of Assessors of Ken Mikewitz for a term to expire at the May 14, 2019 Annual Town Election, and discussion presentation regarding Library Community Forum, December 11, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Linkwiss Commons with the Library Board of Trustees, Library Building Committee, and Memory Statue Renovation Grant Update and Acceptance of Grant Check with Peggy Novak and Susie Wheelwright from the Historical Commission, and talk about the historical site sign, and in consideration of signing regulatory agreement with the Fields of Sherburne, Ben Stephens, and talk about Community Preservation Act, and then 2019 Annual Town Meeting, review the timeline and important dates, consideration of opening and closing the annual town meeting warrant, consideration of any proposed articles, and consideration of departmental operating and capital budgets. There is a possible warrant article regarding proposed new position Sustainability Coordinator with Fred Cunningham, Debbie Demoro, and Alicia Goody from Upper Charles Climate Action, UCCA. Under routine business, Town Administrator Report and Selectmen Reports. Then adjourn to executive session, and the Board may return to public session. It's Executive Session, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A is the exemption subsection 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement negotiations if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, CM&amp;D Union, and then subsection 3 to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, subsection 7, for the purpose of complying with any general or special law, specifically GL Chapter 214, Section 1B, right to privacy.
Terrific. Any amendments to the agenda? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. We have one public comment from Heidi Doyle.
Props.
Heidi Doyle, and I'm Goulding Street East in Sherburne. And I'm here as a resident because I'd like to make some public comments and bring this up. This is not a discussion. I don't expect to get any feedback from it, but I would like to have a chance to air some concerns I've had. First, I want to acknowledge the hard work from a lot of people in this town. The Town Library has been an immense undertaking, and there has been lots of volunteer hours, and I have seen personally the efforts from everyone in this room, Select Board, Library Trust, Library Advisory, people have been working very hard to try and get this project together. What I attended last week was actually an excellent meeting on capital planning, and one of the afternoon sessions had been on communicating with the public about capital needs and costs. And it was an outstanding presentation from several different towns, and they, two keys that came out that several presenters said you had to have was trust and transparency, and those kept coming up again and again. And it made me really think about what's with this project, some of the concerns I've personally experienced in my job as treasurer, and some of the things I'd like to bring up to try and focus back on to the trust and transparency issues. The information I'm going to talk about is all public documents that's on the website. It's FAQs on the town, it's in the libraries, meeting minutes, it's on our annual town reports, it's things that have been said here online. I'm happy to get documentation of the information I'm going to present. One of the concerns I've had is when I started looking back at the beginning of when the project was first publicized here for 2015, the town meeting vote occurred in April. In December, the Library Trust in their meeting minutes has a section where they voted to increase the budget to 8.6 million, and specifically in there, and then they published it in the FAQs shortly thereafter in January, it says the trustees committed an additional 1.2 million of endowment funds to cover the higher than estimated project cost when the increased cost was revealed back in December. This 1.2 that they have pledged from their endowment costs, it said, and any other donations, has been clearly stated in several places, yet in all the budget scenarios I've seen from the town, that number has not been included. The donations, I've been told, they've always exceeded the donations of the 2.8 initial amount, when in actuality, they did increase it by 1.2 several months later, so the actual number is 4 million, and they've not met that number yet. And that's a number I would like to have come out and have asked the Select Board to say, where is the remainder of those funds? A check was presented for 918,000 back in January, and at the time, to his treasurer, I didn't know what that check was for. It was for partial on this amount that they had agreed. Another one that is key on the trust issues is I've had some personal difficulties. I've had to come to the Select Board to ask for an MOU with to be done, that MOU has not been followed. And that is very hard for me then to accept and move forward with some of the trust issues. To date, the funds still have not, the account has not been set up, the funds have not been placed, and that's three weeks past the deadline, the MOU. On the other side, for the library side, I feel one of the trust issues has been with the town is communication of what expendable funds are. In our annual meetings that we see, the different color publications, there's a whole budget and always lists what the non-expendable trust funds are and expendable trust funds are, and I think that there's a misperception in the public in this town of what expendable funds the library really has. They're listed as expendable, they see a non-expendable of 464, something that doesn't seem to change. The expendable amounts has varied in a couple million up to 4 million at one time, but I think what is happening, the public sees that as expendable being available and wondering why the library's not putting that money forward to the project, when I think expendable may mean that you can expense it, but there are limitations on whether it's for books or others, and that's not clearly communicated, I don't believe, to the town. And so I kind of see on their side, there's a perception that the town feels there's a lot of funds that may or may not actually be there. One thing I would love is to get more transparency on what funds actually are there, because there's a question of can they be spent, or do they not want to spend some? And it's difficult going through the trust, but I wish the Select Board would be able to get more transparency on those issues.
Should we try to set a row of chairs up in the front here, since it seems that too many people go in? Maybe we can get a row of chairs sit up front here, since there seem to be a lot of people standing.
Please open the other side, there was nothing in there.
Well, that's secret technology, I don't know how to do that.
The next section I wanted to go to, I was just alluding to the gifts and the grant section, and I have down here what the town has in their records and what was actually appearing to be pledged was the 1.2 something million, what we received was 918. The grant amount, and I'm not going into the roof, which had its own separate grant, that's really not what I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to just get that 1.2 number. This $290,000 that I see has not been met yet, and that's what I would like to find out, is how that's going to be met even before we look at any other gaps, because it has been clearly committed on the published documents.
Yeah, maybe at this point, we should...
Heidi, we have an agenda item for a discussion of the presentation. Normally, the public comment is two or three minutes. Do you mind waiting?
I'll make it very quick. I didn't want to have this be a discussion, I just want to present and ask for some support from the Selectmen. So, very quickly, this is the breakdown of the components. 2015, the start, town is green, you have the donations, and then you have the grants amounts. 2016, you can see it increased. Today, we're being, or in this era, we're being asked for potentially 2 more million. This is what it looks like. What we actually voted was, and I'm hearing what it is, 7.4 million potentially borrowed, and anything else, I think this can be put on the side. Roughly percentage of the project would be these allocations that we're looking at. What I feel, I've only been asked for as treasurer is to say what amount would it cost to bond 2 million dollars in the town. That's the only scenario I've been asked, is if the town had to fund 2 million, what would it look like? There's two extremes here. The town can fund the full 2 million, if it's 2 million, I'm just using that as a placeholder number, or the Library Trust could fund the 2 million. I see this as a whole spectrum in between, there's a whole range between these two extremes. At the meeting I went to last week, Town Administrator's one said he went through 18 different scenarios, another one with the 25 different scenarios, they were bigger projects, but I think what I've took back on is I would like to see at least three or five different scenarios. Woodhaven has already had a history of working out with the town some alternatives. I'd like to see the Select Board come up with some more alternatives, or ask for different presentations along this continuum and spectrum. So I think what I would like to say in conclusion here, there's a lot of good work, I would like to focus back on trust and transparency on some of these projects and get some things brought up, acknowledge the works that the Boards have done and worked together. I would like to say it's not in the town's interest to stop, we all know that, how do we move forward? But I think if we can look at the continuum, come up with some more solutions, and also look at the pledge amounts, I'd appreciate that support. Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda has two items, a warrant and the next meeting scheduled for December 20. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a joint appointment with...
What's that?
I have only one item on my consent agenda.
What's that?
I have only one item on my consent agenda.
In the packet, you've got your...
There's a payroll warrant.
There's a warrant.
You need to either amend the agenda or hold it till the next meeting.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Either amend the agenda or hold it till the next meeting.
And, let's see, what do we...
Sorry to be technical, but...
Yeah, let's amend the agenda so we can approve it tonight.
Yeah, that sounds fine. I'd move to amend the agenda to include a new item, which is payroll warrant.
For $5,610.40, I would second that. Motion, all in favor of the amendment?
Can we have that as a standing item under the consent agenda? It shouldn't come out.
It usually is, but there was a mix-up because we went three weeks and upstairs didn't think there was a payroll, and then they realized there was.
Hate it when upstairs does that, it's just...
Chuck, you have a question from Carol. Carol?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. What is the consent agenda?
The consent agenda has two items, one, a notice to the Board of when the next meeting is, and we just amended it to add a warrant, a payroll warrant for $5,000...
$610.40.
$610.40, we just amended the agenda.
Okay, well, as a point of order, those items should appear on your agenda. We need to help the meeting.
That's why I raised the question. I'm standing here, the motion was to approve two items on the consent agenda, my warrant only had one. I didn't know what the second one was.
My agenda has none. It just says consent agenda, so it would be good to have the actual items on that agenda in the future.
Check the posted agenda.
What's that?
This is the posted agenda as far as I know, and it had the one item, and we've just amended it to add the second item. I think you're all set.
Terrific. The next item is the joint appointment with the Board of Assessors to appoint Kidemuskevich to the Board of Assessors to take an appointment, I'm sorry, he's... This is to replace Groove Kachal, who's resigned from the Board of Assessor, and Ken would be an appointment to the Board for a term to expire at the 2019 Annual Town Election, which is May 14, 2019. Is Ken in the meeting?
Michael Goldstein.
Thank you for agreeing to serve.
You're very welcome.
Discussion?
So, I know Ken, and I'm glad that we're able to fill the position, it's an important position, so I'd move to appoint Ken to the vacant position.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just say this is a very, very qualified candidate based on the description of his background and profession, and thank you for stepping forward.
All in favor of the motion?
Do you have a comment?
Yep.
I was supposed to vote with you, so I'm moving that the Board of Assessors open their meeting now, so we can deliberate with you. Just to make sure we put that on the...
What's this, Diane?
It says a joint appointment, so they have to vote.
And we need to do a roll call vote, and they're included in the roll call.
next Tuesday at Linkwiss Commons to discuss the status of the library building project.
So there are seven voters that determine to fill the position.
You want to go up, call your members? It's a joint meeting of the, called by the Select Board and the Library Board of Trustees.
We're gonna do the chair, go ahead.
And you need to do a roll call for each individual member. George Fisk has kindly agreed to moderate the meeting, which is terrific, thank you,
Michael Goldstein and I approve.
George Morrow approve.
Baldur Essis approve.
George. Charles Young, yes. I thought that we should open the meeting with a brief discussion of, this originally
Mike Chamo, yes.
Eric Johnson, approve.
It's unanimous. had been scheduled as a special town meeting, and on the advice of council, we've been
Congratulations.
advised that that was not the correct course, so I think we need to have a preliminary introduction, and then I'd like to have presentations by Town Council of the, a summary of the opinion, like they did a couple of meetings ago. And the Library Trustees and the Building Committee representatives will be presenting a summary of the status of the project and the plans going forward, and then there'll be a Q&amp;A session. Mary, did you want to add anything to...
No, I think we're planning roughly 7 to 9, hopefully it'll adjourn right around 9 o'clock, you know, but it will go longer if it needs to. In terms of the setup, it'll be similar to how we do the setup at town meeting, where we'll have representatives, not the full Library Trustees or the full LBC onstage, but three or four from each board up on the stage with the Select Board. And as Chuck mentioned, George Fisk has graciously offered to moderate, so I think that'll make it a very productive session, and we'll have name tags, so everybody knows who's who up on the stage, and, you know, as, you know, Tom McEnany is here and Town Council will be present, so if there are some questions that need to be answered or can't be answered, we appreciate your participation at that event. In terms of what Jim Kolb and Hank Roush will be presenting on behalf of the trustees and the LBC, and in terms of the content, I think Chuck kind of covered it, but we'll go over sort of the original, remind people of the original goals of the project, status of the project, what we're doing to make sure it gets done, you know, kind of looking at the budget detail, what was it, what is it now, understanding how we're going to be able to fund the delta, and then talk a little bit about, you know, the library endowment in a little more detail so people can understand that. I think Heidi's comment about people don't understand all of it is accurate, so hopefully people will understand more about it after that meeting.
I just wanted to jump in. So you heard the words trust and transparency, that's really the premise of this entire get-together on the 11th. That's why we're doing it, and I think everybody that's been involved in the project is striving for that to be the case all the way along. We're going to get into more detail, as Mary just said, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Some of that will revolve around the actual construction and design, other things will revolve around the money, so that's fully the backbone of our presentation, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, and the plan is to have it televised as well, so if people are not able to make it, they can either watch it on the reruns, or I guess watch it live from home.
And before we go further into the details, I think it makes sense to have the trustees that are present and this Board react to the structure and the order. We could have Town Council simply respond to Q&amp;As. My personal view is I think it makes more sense, it's a critical issue, to have a brief summary, as we did at our meeting a couple of times ago, but I wanted to give all of you a chance to weigh in on, Mary and I have talked about the agenda and the structure, but wanted to give you all a chance to weigh in on it.
I think that's a good idea to have Town Council explain how we got from scheduling a town meeting to, I think you're going to explain that as well in your remarks, but to have Town Council explain their opinion or summarize their opinion, I think that's very important to have done from the stage.
And will it be done, what do you call it, kind of like, will it feel like a town meeting, you know what I'm trying to say? So, library presents, they give a presentation like you would on any article, and then people follow the format of recognized and ask questions, and instead of forming a dialogue, they ask a question, answer, and done, you know what I'm trying to say?
I was going to suggest the same thing, that if George is going to be the moderator for this, we should have some ground rules established at the start, so this doesn't get out of hand, it's going to be a heated topic, and it's just better to reinforce civility at the front and have established rules.
Have time limits for comments and that, like we typically do at town meetings, so I think that productively moves along a discussion when there's time limits and guidelines.
And there's a lot of information, I think it may actually make sense to have an initial presentation longer than we normally do at a town meeting, to provide the information and the transparency that is critical. There's a lot of detailed information that I don't think people have had access to, and then have the Q&amp;A as a separate follow-up, but basically have a presentation that summarizes...
That's the stage, and gives as much detail as we can give. I think we had, we met with George on Monday, just before the LBC meeting on Monday night, and we're in sync with, you know, your approach in terms of, you know, we'll have some time limits if we need them, and we will, you know, ask people not to repeat the same information, and, you know, civility and neighbors and friends and all that, so...
Do you plan to have handouts or some type of summary that, so people have the numbers to look at, because when you recite stuff like that, it's hard to keep track?
Yeah, that's a good idea, because there is a lot of information on each one of these slides, if you happen to look through them. We can do that.
Yeah, we can have hard copies of the slides available, and we also, we're planning on having hard copies of the FAQ that's been posted on both the town website as well as the library website.
I didn't get any slides, that's the first I heard about slides.
They just have the first three slides, yeah. We've got the draft set of slides that's under review, and we were discussing with Tom, and we'll probably have him give a quick look to it before Tuesday.
Questions, suggestions?
Mark Brown, if it's possible to get that presentation with the slides on the website and the other floor.
I think so. We could probably, maybe by end of day on Monday, I mean, we're a little, maybe Monday, probably end of day Monday, I don't want to overcommit.
Good idea, the conversation might be more productive, people have already formed opinions or not on the information.
So, the part that I'm most concerned with is that we not have answers that say, we don't know that information, we'll look it up and we'll get back to you sometime in the future. So, my two senses, to make sure that you have there everything that you need, and I don't mean just books and records, but the people who have the answers to questions. The fundamental purpose of this is to allow the voters to find out what's going on, and they don't find out what's going on if they come in with a question and we don't have the answer. So I want to encourage you to be over-inclusive in who you bring, over-inclusive in terms of what you prepare, and have everything there that is needed to answer every question.
I agree, Paul, and the idea on the Q&amp;A and the way we discussed it with George is that the subject matter experts who are in the room, whether it's a question about the roof, or a question about the schedule, or a question about, you know, some aspect of the budget, we would defer to the person who has the best answer that they can provide. I do think there may be some questions that come from the audience that we might not answer, simply because of potential litigation, and I would look to Town Council to provide us with, you know, some guidance on that as we're going through it real time. But I'm in agreement, we want to answer as, you know, everything that's asked of us, and there is a lot of detail, so we'll probably have laptops and lots of papers and backup.
Sharon's going to be at this meeting, right?
No.
I think it'd be a good idea for her to be there, to be able to answer.
I have one thing, just on the Town Council, if they're going to be, I know you said the Library Trustees and the Building Committee will be onstage along with the Select Board, I assume Town Council will be up there with us as well?
I think that was the assumption.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't see it listed as them being onstage, but I would make sure that it's set up that way.
And just to clarify, I understood that Bond Council had also been invited, is that correct?
I didn't invite Bond Council.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was confirmed or not, I had heard that earlier on.
Oh, I think, I think it'd be good, helpful to have Bond Council there.
Okay.
Is there going to be a representative from the contractor of the design team?
At this point, we weren't thinking that was going to happen.
I mean, I'm just concerned that there may be questions that, we're sort of all on one side of this thing and they're on the other side.
Who's that?
I'm wondering if there's going to be a representative from either the design team or the contractor there. I know it could get messy, but I think there's going to be a lot of questions that any of us really won't be able to necessarily answer about some of the technical stuff, or why things went the way that they went.
It's a public meeting, so it's certainly allowed, whether they go like in town meeting in a separate section or not, I don't know. I'm unsure if they should be invited.
Yeah, I think it's difficult because the claims for recovery, obviously, directly involve them, so...
Again, it's just, it's a, I think there's going to be a lot of people with some sort of unanswered questions.
Chris, if I may, I agree with you in general, out of principle, but I think they're really pegged against each other right now, and I don't, I don't know that it would be that productive.
I mean, you're going to be there, Chris?
Yes.
Because I think factually, you can answer a lot of the design issues, even if you can't project when things are going to be fixed and so forth.
Right, that's sort of what I'm going with it, is once people say, well, how long is it going to take to do X without having somebody on that side of the equation here?
I don't know that those answers would be trustworthy anyway, even if they were here, so...
Well, I think a lot of the information too can be provided by you, Chris, and the LBC.
We're going to, so for instance, as far as finishing a certain component of the building, we're going to respond to that using the information that's been given to us by Five Star. And then when someone asks us if we think that's valid, we're going to have to say that's what we're going on right now.
Well, that leads me to ask this. Some of us went for a tour of the library construction site, and I was surprised at how it wasn't as bad as I expected. From the meeting or two that I attended, it was all things that are pretty bad and so on, and so I went in there, you know, pretty, pretty tensed up, but it turned out to be not so bad. And so I'm wondering, be... I think there's going to be a lot of people with some sort of unanswered questions.
Chris, if I may, I agree with you in general, out of principle, but I think they're really pegged against each other right now. And I don't know that it would be that productive.
I mean, you're going to be there, Chris?
Yes.
Because I think factually, you can answer a lot of the design issues, even if you can't project when things are going to be fixed and so forth.
Right. That's sort of where I'm going with it is, once people say, well, how long is it going to take to do X without having somebody on that side of the equation here?
I don't know that those answers would be trustworthy anyway, even if they were here. So.
Well, I think a lot of the information too can be provided by you, Chris, and the LBC.
We're going to, so for instance, as far as finishing a certain component of the building, we're going to respond to that using the information that's been given to us by Five Star. And then when someone asks us if we think that's valid, we're going to have to say that's what we're going on right now.
Well, that leads me to ask this. Some of us went for a tour of the library construction site. And I was surprised at how it wasn't as bad as I expected. The meeting or two that I attended, it was all things that are pretty bad and so on. So I went in there, you know, pretty, pretty tensed up, but it turned out to be not so bad. And so I'm wondering, between now and December 11th?
11th, yeah.
And between the time I saw the building and December 11th, has things gotten better?
The roofers are on site, which is a positive. And there is some progress. So I think some progress is, I mean, I can't say it's.
So we get the results of the hygienist test. I saw an email today on that. And while it was a little elevated with regards to the water infiltration and the impact on the drywall, it was not over the top according to the hygienist. I haven't seen the report yet.
But one thing we thought about doing, and Jeff Waldron had the good suggestion of having some photos available as part of the presentation, and maybe it's just cycling as people are entering and really giving them a sense of the new space, you know, the good, the bad, and, you know, the vision of what it is going to be when it's all done. So.
Did you ever get a model of that building or anything that you could set up? No?
We had a Lego model built.
That was it?
We could bring that. But I would be afraid it would fall apart.
I haven't seen a Revit model.
And there's no CAD presentation or anything like that?
Mary, I think that's a good suggestion from Jeff, because I know from advisory, we would have like a second screen over on the side where we would go through the Warren Articles at a town meeting, where you could have a slideshow going over there while you're having your main presentation and the main screen in the middle.
Yeah.
But there's also way more progress than people see driving around.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
That's part of it. Paul brought it up when you toured that thing too. But if you go inside, there's significant work being done. So I just want to correct and make a full presentation.
Well, Paul, you remind me of my children when they say, well, Dad, it's not as bad as you think it is. I'm having a flashback to dealing with my teenage children. I didn't understand the answer. There must be some CAD, some mockups of what the space is going to look like. I think it's a great idea to show what the end goal is.
Like renderings.
Well, we do have all the renderings of the main interior and exterior spaces, so we can have those available certainly. And I think taking pictures of, you know, inside the children's room in particular, and the community room downstairs, and the conference rooms, and just kind of, you know, we could just do some text over to show them what it is. You know, the new kitchen, kitchenette, sorry, is the building inspector here? It's a kitchenette. I'm pretty sure it's just a kitchenette. So we'll have that. And, you know, again, it's just bringing people up to speed on where we are and answering as many questions as we can. And if there are some technical questions we can't answer, we'll track them and we'll capture them. And at the next OAC meeting, we'll bring them up and make sure we can get an answer. And we can always post updates to the FAQ on the website.
Any suggestions from town council about the meeting? My assumption is we need to be careful about discussing specific claims against the performance bond and against the contractor and the design team.
Yes, definitely, Mr. Chairman. I think obviously it's a public record that a performance bond claim has been made. So certainly we address that to some extent. But as far as any specific claims against either the contractor, architect, OPM, or any other party, we would not want to get into any specifics with respect to that. One other comment too, there was a suggestion that perhaps bond counsel should attend. And it's completely up to the board's discretion whether we want to do that. Bond counsel does bill at a fairly significant rate, however, so you may want to take that into consideration. I don't know that he's necessary, given that I will be there. I will give the opinion, which we have represented and as the town knows, bond counsel has also agreed with. So I don't know if you need him there specifically.
I think we could also look at it, because I don't think the bond counsel's opinion had a discussion about potential litigation, if I recall.
I don't remember, but I don't know. I think bonding may be an issue, but I'm not sure it's a bond counsel discussion. I think it's a Sharon discussion. I mean, it's going to be nice to describe the library, but I think people want to hear about the numbers and how we're going to pay for it, and over what time, and what the impact on the town budget is. And all of that is going to be stuff that Sharon can cover, you can cover, and David presumably can cover some of that. And, you know, I don't know that we need counsel from that standpoint.
Mike, the thing that bond counsel could add and did add was that he didn't need any more votes to authorize and approve the borrowing.
But he doesn't have to be there to say that, is my point. I don't know that we need him, I don't know that we need to probe him on that. Do we?
That's the same opinion that we rendered, which is consistent with what bond counsel had also applied.
He was hard pressed to come up with an article that would, what would the article do? That, you know, the whole kind of discussion of voting the same thing twice, all that kind of stuff.
You know, though, I mean, this is the big meeting. There is obviously a lot of angst, a lot of feelings out there. Might be worth paying him for like two hours, honestly. Well, I'm sure he bills travel time, but I, but you know what, it's an important enough meeting. We've had him out certainly for selectmen's meeting. I would support actually him coming out to this one, because this is the big one. It is. If him saying it directly gives people some assurance, rather than the memo that we read in executive session and talk about, it might be worth it.
Paul, George, Eva?
I don't know if it's necessary. I'm kind of on the, I think the numbers or more should be coming from, unfortunately, I don't think Sharon's going to be available because I think she's on vacation. Is that true? So, but I think the library has their numbers. I think they have, the library trustees have their treasure, they're, you know, they can, they'll have a presentation on how this is going to be paid for.
I'd forgotten that Sharon is on vacation, so.
Dave, you may have to come up to speed on that.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
I know you're up to speed. I did say that.
You're an advocate. Yeah, I'm inclined to go along with Mike and George and Tom. I don't think it's black and white, but Tom, you can certainly summarize what's in the bond counsel's opinion as well. Michael?
So I have a couple of questions, or at least items to put out there that could be addressed at this meeting. One is, I'm glad to hear that there appears to be no daylight between the bond counsel's opinion and town council. I would be further assured to hear that a bank who would be presented with a ban to do any funding for additional work would also agree with this, because I've been in situations where my counsel says we can do this, and another counsel says, eh, you know, explain this further. I think that another distinction would be, in the case of the region, we had some whoops that we had to clean up because of the $40 million construction and renovation of the regional campus. But we came back to both towns each time to fix the waste treatment facility, and then correct the decision where the AC system was pulled out and we had a worker issue with the teachers, and obviously not a good educational environment because of the heat. So part of me says, you know, why are we not following that practice and what's different? And the last concern would be to make sure that this meeting is a little more effectively publicized. I think from the people I've talked to who've done their own surveying, most people don't even know this is happening. And I think the full intent of this is to raise awareness, to hear, to potentially diffuse concerns. And the worst thing you can do is have a meeting like that and then have a bunch of people after the fact find out about it. And then finally, having experienced the cell phone tower issue on the regional campus, I hope to God that you have people that come and are civil. But we kind of wish we had a unicorned officer there. And again, I can't picture the same level of angst, but I've been there.
I did reach out to Chief Thompson, and he offered to provide a detail, just in case there was anything disorderly.
Somebody should have a gavel and be willing to smack it if people do not follow your agreed upon protocol, because that was the worst hour collectively of our board's life, that one evening. And I don't think anyone should have to go through that. I think you guys have some very challenging issues to react to. My last point is, what hasn't been discussed is, while we can go out and borrow this money, does the exclusion for tax purposes and Prop 2 and 1/2 purposes apply to that? Or will this need to be absorbed into the operating budget? That needs to be spoken to. Because clearly, from what I've read, you got authority to go off and get $7.5 million. Do you have the moral authority to exclude $7.5 million of debt service from the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2? And that one, I think you guys should all be doing a whole load of thinking and having a good opinion about, in conjunction probably with advisory by Tuesday.
In terms of publicizing it, mailing, it's going to be too late. We can certainly send out a blast email. Can't wait to.
Didn't notices go out to residences or not?
No.
We didn't do a hard copy mailing. We did send out a mailing from the library. And there was also one, I think, that went out from a town mailing list that I got.
COA newsletter too?
No, nobody got that email. That's what prompted me to make a few conversations. And then that prompted other people to talk to people. You'd be better off, you'd get more hits on posting on Nextdoor at this point.
Could you do that, Mary?
I did not do it, but it has been posted. So we'll bring that back online, get someone to post the flyer. And.
It was on the front page of the Dover Sherburne Press today. I did see when I got it.
Or use the broadcast system or whatever, you know. There are some tools that are a little heavier on push.
Right.
It'll get easier coverage.
And for the 100 people watching tonight, it's Tuesday.
There's 100 people in the room.
At Linkwurst, starting at 7:00.
So Michael just raised the number 7. whatever million, the borrowing number. And we've had this discussion a lot of times. I don't think anybody thinks that we'd ever need to borrow that full amount, but I think that's going to be an important point to put into the conversation, because once that number gets tossed out there, it's a scary number, and people are not going to appreciate the, you know, how it fits into the whole equation. You're going to get distracted talking about that issue, instead of getting out the body of information, which might get people closer to a real answer. So I would suggest if you have some range in mind, or some upper limit that you can predict with some degree of confidence, you probably ought to put it out there, just so people are working in the real world when they have the discussion.
Yeah. 7.6 is a scary number. Any other suggestions up here or the trustees? Any other?
Does anybody else in here have a thought?
Anyone in the audience have thoughts, comments? Okay. Thanks, Mary. The next item on the agenda is the update on the memory statue renovation grant and the acceptance of the grant check. Peggy Novak and Susie Willwright from the Historical Commission presenting.
Oh, very nice, Chuck.
There we go.
Well, we have our buttons.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure to be able to come here tonight and give you an update and a summary of the completed project. I think it was about two years from the time we found out that there were going to be grant funds available to apply for, to getting a phone call from Diane saying that Paul Haltz from S Historic had dropped off a check at Town Hall. The project, as you know, consisted of multiple pieces. We had Derek Nickerson from A1 Masonry work on the stonework. He lifted and reset the steps, straightened the sidewalls with shims, and then cleaned all of the granite of many years of black grime from pollution. And then we had Rika McNally come and take care of the bronze statue. She cleaned and inspected it, and then repertined it to correct the color, added a coat of protective inkel lac, and waxed it to give her a nice, soft look. We were helped all along the way by a consultant that we hired, Lisa Howe, from Building Conservation Associates. I don't think we could have done it without her expertise in helping us prepare the application. And then once we were awarded the grant, prepare the bid documents, and then oversee and advise us throughout the project. We want to thank the town in general for supporting us at town meeting, this board in particular for all of your support, as well as advisory, the cemetery commission, and a number of other boards. Dave Williams gave us a tremendous amount of help in preparing the application. I don't think we could have gotten through at all without Diane's help. Her assistance and persistence was invaluable. Sean Kline, I don't think he's, oh, there he is. I also want to thank Sean, because he was there when we needed him to pick up and install our sign and provide water for the contractors, because as you know, there's no water on site. And every time we called him and said, Sean, Sean, can you do something for us? He was there to help us. And now we'll be happy to be able to tell him you had to take the sign down.
Right. It can come down.
Yes. Have I forgotten anything?
I don't think you have. I think that you've seen all of this. But I will.
I have presented to the Board of Selectmen for your archives. We have a copy. When we began this project, it was very important to try and figure out what had happened before. And it's all right there. So don't lose it.
Yeah, I was going to say, speaking to Diane is the right choice, Susan.
So let me say congratulations to both of you for carrying this project for the last several years to this wonderful completion. Yes, we do have the report. We do have the photographs. I saw the care, meticulous care to replacing pebbles on the floor. That kind of care, attention, amazing. Absolutely amazing. So again, congratulations. Well done.
We also sent you a draft image of our next project, which is historic site signs. So that, this is an idea we had a while ago, but we kind of had to put it off in order to get the grant and the statue accomplished. But the idea is that it's a very proactive, educational kind of thing. And we, our first sign has been designed.
We don't have the.
Oh, Diane? No? No? Oh, no. It's gorgeous. It's really fun.
I think we sent you a draft.
We did. Yeah. Yeah. So maybe Diane can go back to the emails and look.
I'll go right now.
Yeah, I received.
It was sent as an attachment.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
I did get it, but it wasn't on the agenda, so we'll.
Okay. Just updating you that this is our next project. It will be in the ground with Sean's help in the spring, probably, because it's still. ground with Sean's help in the spring, probably, because we're, it's, it's not, it's still in production at this point.
It is on the agenda, so you're allowed to talk about it.
It's on as the historic-
Historic site sign.
We'll have to be a little creative then in describing it. Chuck has seen it. It's a sign describing the history of Farm Pond, and it's put together with a timeline of the various periods of use of the pond, along with historic photographs from the Historical Society's archives illustrating-
It's a joint project with them.
Yeah. And that's, we worked with a sign company on the design, and it's all ready to go to creation.
I had the pleasure of being present at the William Bradford Homer Dowst Day, and the, the work is just meticulous. One of my grandfathers was an Italian stonemason, who was a perfectionist, and the work is gorgeous. So, it was a, and I was pleased to learn that William Bradford Homer Dowst was not only a patent lawyer, he was an entrepreneur, and so-
He had an amazing career, really.
Right, the-
We learned to.
Sort of turnaround Reed and Barton, but the, the work is just gorgeous. It really is meticulous, so, thank you very much for shepherding it through, and thanks to Diane, since she's not here right now.
I think she went off to try to get the, the sign draft.
We, we also have a little show and tell, in that we already have received a plaque for the bathhouse at Farm Pond, which is a historic building. It's a big part of the, the later history of Farm Pond. It was a WPA project in the 30s, and we thought it ought to be, as well as commemorated on, on the historic information sign, that it ought to have its own historic plaque. So, again, with Sean's help, except he's gone hiding.
He left before you asked another favor of him.
He's gonna start to run when he sees us.
Thank you both for all of your wonderful work on this.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your support.
Terrific. The next item on the agenda is a local regulatory agreement for the Fields of Sherburne. Dave, you wanna tee this up?
I can't. I don't, I don't know enough about this, honestly.
This is for the project, it's a 40B project at 247A Washington Street, which has 32 single condo units, eight of which are affordable. Lee Smith at KP Law drafted the final regulatory agreement for signature, and the developer, Ben Stevens at Trast Development, has already signed the agreement. Rick Novak, as Chair of the ZBA, has signed the ZBA acknowledgment form, very similar to the local, the regulatory agreement that we looked at a couple of weeks ago.
We got one meeting again, I think, on North Main.
Yep.
So, I move approval.
Any, is there a second?
I would just ask Town Council to confirm that this is in the proper form, or your partner has said so, or?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll second it then.
Any questions, discussion, all in favor? Terrific. The next item on the agenda, Paul-
Does that have to be signed, Chuck? Is that coming around to, with the original for that?
I'm assuming Diane has the originals.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda was the discussion about the Community Preservation Act. Paul suggested adding it to the agenda, and I think it's a good idea, 'cause there was a consideration in the town a number of years ago, but Paul, do you wanna tee this up?
There was an article that went with this that I hope some of you saw. The, I've been working with the Baker Polito Administration to do some fixes to the Community Preservation Act for all cities and towns of the Commonwealth, and there's about 175 who have accepted the Community Preservation Act. And so, while we're working to fix that, I was thinking, well, it's nice that I'm working to help 175 cities and towns, but Sherburne is not one of those communities that has adopted the statute. And as we get it fixed, why shouldn't Sherburne have the benefit of it also? So, that's what's led me to suggest that we should take another look at this.
Yeah, I was trying to remember when we considered it. I know that there were some concerns about how well the state was gonna fund it, and it was for designated purposes, which, as I recall, were affordable housing-
Recreation.
-and open space acquisition.
And historical-
And historic, right. And it was a, there was a really good civil discussion. One of the concerns was the town had not historically funded those specific areas. They weren't areas that were in, in need of great funding, and there was a concern about pre-taxing on programs that had not been reviewed at annual town meeting, but Tom Ermsden was particularly good and effective in, in discussing the pros and cons, as I recall, but how, how, so it sounds like about half the towns in the Commonwealth have adopted it. How's the funding been by the state?
Well, the article that was attached said that $600 million has been distributed over the period of time from 2000 to about 2000. Oh, here's a copy of the article. So, 600 million has been distributed, but the, as more and more cities and towns join, that means the funding pool is being distributed over an increasingly larger number of communities. And then a year or two, the city of Boston joined, which had a huge impact in making the funding much less. So, we're trying to fix the funding by adjusting the funding sources. The way the act was originally written, there was a $20 fee paid at the Registry of Deeds when you recorded instruments. That $20 hasn't changed in all this period of time, so the idea is increase that fee to a higher amount. In the meantime, each year as the state has had budget surpluses, we have proposed, and the General Court has agreed, to take some money out of the surpluses and distribute it to the cities and towns who had adopted the CPA. The point of all this is that Sherburne has gotten zero of the 600 million and zero of the distributions. So, while originally the match, the state match and the local match was almost equal, one for one, now it's down to like 20% compared to the, to the state's contribution, until we make a fix in this. But even at 20%, that, that's 20% more than we had before. So, for example, if we do the memory statute project with the Community Preservation Fund, we would have money to pay for the town's matching share in the Community Preservation Fund. If we don't have the Community Preservation Fund, we have to go find the money and fight all kinds of competing other interests. The Community Preservation Fund makes sure that there's money there for historic preservation.
Well, does that mean we wouldn't be eligible for that grant if we had the Community Preservation Act? Or are you just saying we wouldn't bother to look for it?
No, no, we'd still go for the grant, but we could do this, the local match could be CPA funds, so the net effect might be, it would cost us no taxpayer.
Right, and I, but I think, and I think that's an important point, and I had asked to have, if Sharon could run these numbers, and maybe she will when she comes back from wherever she is, but the, the policy consideration is how much have we put towards things that could have been funded by Community Preservation Act surcharge money? And that would offset your tax rate, so if there was an additional 1% or 2% that the town voted, but the tax rate went down by a certain amount because you no longer had to fund the things that are now coming out of operating budget or capital budgets. It, it, it's not gonna be as big a number as it seems on its, on its surface.
Yeah, I'd like to see the numbers on that, too. I just, I didn't know anything about this until Paul sent this to me, the Community Preservation Act, and I'd like to, I'd like to know more details about what kind of surcharge it is that you get on a property tax in order to be a part of this.
The town can vote it. It's, it's, I think it's 1%, 2%, or 3%.
1%, 2%, or 3%, it used to be.
And then, and then to see what the benefit is of that. I'd like to see the numbers behind the cost-benefit analysis of-
That's what we need.
Doing something like this.
Yeah.
But just to, to take your point a little further, it's not just about what money we have spent, it's what money we could have spent. 'Cause there's a lot of things that communities don't do because they don't have the money. That's why the CPA was created, was to encourage communities to do good things in those, in those three areas, like historic preservation, affordable housing is another big one, and the-
Open space and rec.
Open space and rec. So, this is intended, it's, it's, it's a state policy initiative to encourage people to go do that. Preserve our history, preserve our affordable housing. We, we had, like, a housing unit came on with a right of first refusal. We were gonna lose its affordable nature. We didn't have the funds to buy into that. We didn't have the legal structure to buy into it and, and try and save that unit. Now, it turns out it worked out all right, by luck. But if we had a dedicated funding source, then we'd have funding for affordable housing projects. We could actually do more towards implementing our housing production plan. We'd be less vulnerable to 40Bs, all, all those kinds of things. So, it would become a good funding source, and if you remember, like, two or three meetings ago, we had some people come in and talk to us about an Affordable Housing Trust, but that had no funding source.
I, I mean, I, I hear you, Paul. I just think if you're trying to sell this to Town Meeting, and we can have this discussion longer when we start putting a warrant together, telling people that this is a way that they can spend more money on things that they want, or that the town isn't spending enough on, may not be the best way to sell it. I think, I, I think the other side of the mirror is there are things we're already spending money on. We've spent a lot of money for a small town on open space. We spent a lot of money on recreational facilities. We may not have spent that much on housing, I agree with that, but if some of that money we spend on those things, which we should spend, could instead be subsidized by the state, that's a selling point for adopting this. If it's, if it's just, we'll get more money so we can spend more money, I'm not sure that's a winning argument at Town Meeting.
Yeah, I think the discussion back in 2000 was terrific. It was, we'd looked carefully at how much the town had spent in those areas before. As I recall, the town, the vote was about 55, 45, was a close vote, because there are pros and cons. So, running the numbers, I, having a, a sense of what the impact on the tax rate is, is important.
And not every town's done it, so there are pros and cons, because, you know, otherwise, otherwise people would be knocking each other over to adopt it, and that hasn't happened.
Well, and the prediction and the concern that the state wouldn't fund it is, what a surprise.
Well, and also, we're, we're at $20 mil rate, too, which is a, you know, a big number compared to a lot of places. So, but, you know, Lincoln has been very successful, other places have been very successful with the strategy of having preservation funds available.
Well, and Paul makes a great point, too, which is, you know, if you're gonna be serious about affordable housing-
That's right.
Putting, getting a fund together that helps fund it is, this is one of the ways to do it.
I know, um, what is it? I was at the planning board meeting this week, and I'm talking about 41 North Main, and talked about, you know, if this is living, is actually considered housing by the definition, that they could actually start a fund with an initial donation by them, do you know what I mean? Actually create a good housing fund. I will say this, that's kind of the point. I read the article. If 175 communities are doing it, it's almost exactly half of all the communities in Massachusetts. I'd be curious what the demographics are, you know, what their tax rate is, what the demographics of those communities are. Is there, are there larger communities, smaller communities, ones that have higher taxes, lower taxes, and kind of, you know, some of the motivation behind doing it and not doing it?
Well, I'm not here trying to quote, "sell" the board on one position or another. I've been through that years ago. I'm here more to say that it's been a while since the communities looked at this. Let's look at it again. Let's, let's get the numbers that, that George was talking about. Let's get the, the analysis that Mike was talking about. Let's lay it out there, and if there's an interest, fine. If there isn't, we've done with it.
I'm glad you brought it up, 'cause it has, like you said, if it's been 18 years, I mean-
Right.
I didn't live here 18 years ago, so it was, so it's good to, you know, talk about it again and see if it makes sense for us.
Yeah, in my view, there's a better argument for the town now because of the, the interest in funding affordable housing programs, so. Terrific. Any comments in the audience, or? Yep.
Hi, I'm Leisha Goodie, Zion's Lane. Just from the perspective of affordable housing, I'm on the Mass, the Housing Partnership, and Addie Mae Weiss and I went to a day-long conference a month or so ago, and we realized that most of the affordable housing that's undertaken by many of the communities that were there is funded through CPA funds, and we're kind of struggling now. I think you guys know what kind of structure to come up with, but not having access to CPA funds is really a drawback for us, particularly makes us more vulnerable to 40Bs. Understand the numbers have to be looked at, demographics need to be looked at, but that's what we're realizing.
Terrific. Any other comments?
Here, Pat.
Terrific. The next item on the agenda is-
It's mostly canceled.
The review of the annual town meeting dates, and there's a separate handout with the timetable. This doesn't require any vote, correct, Dave? This is just a consideration of what we think of the timetable?
Right, the items that were added in were the, was the, were the dates set by advisory. In, was it April, April 2nd, 12th, and 16th?
But in, in the packet, are we opening the warrant as of December 6th?
We need to set the dates for opening and closing the warrant.
So, we should be opening the warrants today?
How can we do that?
On here you wrote, "Open the warrant December 6th, to be closed December 20th."
So, we talked about it the last time.
Yeah.
We did.
I don't think it was voted.
We did vote it.
Yeah.
George, what were the dates, opening it?
It says in, under item 7, it says, "Opening the warrant on December 6th and closing the warrant on December 20th." So, it's, tonight we would open it, and the warrant would be closed at our next meeting on the 20th.
So, I second George's motion.
Did I make a mistake?
Okay.
Yeah. I got a request from the Planning Board and from one of the members of the Governance Committee who actually wanted to extend the close. They wanted to go basically to our second meeting in January, which I think would be the 13th or something. Is there any reason not to extend? Does that give advisory less time?
No.
Seventeen, January 17.
Thank you.
Well, we used to close it in early January, between the holidays and the complaints from people about that time period. It's, it's, it wasn't the best time, so the, like, from December 20th through January 10th are really not very good times. But if you do it in January, it's really pressing the whole schedule and compresses it too much. So, my communities that meet in April close their warrants in, in December. I've had one community already close their warrants in November, in order to get ready for an April town meeting.
Thank you. Since there's a Planning Board guy here, can we hear from the Planning Board?
Yeah. We would like to have it extended to mid-January. Just, we have a couple of warrant articles that we're trying to get feedback from other boards, and it takes time to, to present it to them, give them- time to present it to them, give them, that those other boards a chance, and then get back to us. So, if we wanted to have final language in December, it's, it's going to be very difficult to get the final language in order to have that iteration. So, I think when we, when we're looking at this, anticipating that we, that we would be like past schedules, it's, it's difficult to get feedback from the other boards on the, on the articles. The articles we're talking about are the follow-ups from our last time we
We never have the final wording available. You can also do placeholders.
The first governance task force, we did a placeholder, because we didn't have the final language.
But the planning board got crushed last year with the placeholder, that's, I think, what John's reacting to.
Yeah.
There was weather and things like that, but I'm sure we won't have any weather issues.
Well, I'm, I'm, John, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at our schedule here, our proposed schedule says January 10th, we would begin review of the warrant articles. So, if we had the, the warrant closed on January 9th, we would still be able to begin review of at least some of the articles on January 10th. That would buy you another two-plus weeks, and you don't have anything else to do during that time, you could work full-time on warrant articles. No, ser, but ser, but seriously, I mean, that's a week early, but, but at least it keeps this schedule, which I think David has carefully honed based on what the advisory and others need. So, I mean, does that work?
If that allows, if it's okay for us to do that, to have final language on the 9th, by the 9th, that buys us more time.
So, with that amendment, I'd move approval.
Okay. Do you like that? Okay.
Saying January 10th?
I would say the 9th, because the 10th is when we meet to start discussing the warrant articles.
January
9?
9th, we would close the warrant.
Yes.
So, we'd open it
Tonight. And close it on the 9th, at midnight, because I know John's a late-night kind of
So, it means Diane has to stay until midnight to get the articles?
No.
Yes, of course.
He can walk it over to me.
All right.
Terrific. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Before we go into executive session
Just one more item.
You forgot the
Under the annual town meeting, there's the consideration of departmental operating capital budgets?
Yep.
This was a possible warrant article that was brought to us by Fred Cunningham and Debbie DeMoro, Alicia Goodie, and we met, I can't remember when it was, a week or two? Wednesday. And that, I'd like to have them say a few words, because it's, it's something that they can pursue as a warrant article, but I thought that there would be enough interest by the Board of Selectmen to include the position as a
That'd be great.
As a budget request.
Yeah, and this was something that came up the last time when I spoke to Council on Aging, Alicia raised it with me, so that was a good
Terrific.
A good call to, to get in here early.
So, maybe they could describe, or say a few words on what their
The folder.
Concept of the position is?
We have a whole presentation.
Oh, go for it.
This is the regulatory
Chuck, can they do a presentation? They've got a presentation they want to do, is that, that's okay, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, looks great, but it's not coming through yet.
Thank you.
Just the one spot.
Steal my copy, Chuck.
She ever gonna switch it over there? Nope.
Isn't that great, that sign? That's really well-designed.
It really is.
You should put those on all the houses you've
Okay. Nothing like technology to make things interesting.
It ends with the road infestation.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, well, we may have to do this not on the board, but
It's Rick.
I think you're ready to hit in, or? Yeah, on the
There you go.
There you go.
There we go. I brought my technician, which is great. Let me get back to getting here.
Fred Cunningham from Everett Street here in Sherburn, and I'm here tonight representing a group of citizens from Upper Charles Climate Action, which is a, a group that formed here in Sherburn. We've also then, we call ourselves Upper Charles, so we wouldn't get one town only. We now serve Holliston, Ashland, we've got some interest from other towns as well. And what we'd like to discuss is the idea of creating and funding a position for a sustainability coordinator here in Sherburn. I'll try and make this as quick as I possibly can. Our request, and as, as David said a moment ago, we met with him the other day, and he came, he thought this would be our best way of approaching this sustainability coordinator, and that is to have the select board introduce, as part of the budget, the creation and funding of the position. Obviously, the presentation will go through, what's the return on investment, why do we care about a coordinator, et cetera. We do have an alternative, which would be to put it on an article on the warrant, and that would be the beginning text of the article there. And we have the signatures ready to go, and David's holding a place on the warrant for us, but we're hoping that we could do this more through the omnibus budget rather than through a warrant article. So, where are we? Well, the, the town has worked hard as a green community to really get the, the status, the grants, to do conservation work. Gino is, is working with the vulnerability program. There are a lot of things going on, and that's good. We've made good progress since we became a green community in 2011, but those accomplishments have required significant focus by town officials in order to get anything done. They're busy people already. This is the only doom and gloom I'm going to do about climate change tonight, is the third bullet here, because unfortunately, the good work that's already been done is probably not going to be sufficient to actually address climate change and to do our part. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which was the UN panel that just released the 2018 summary for policymakers, back when they did the fifth assessment in 2013-14, the date they set as the kind of tipping point after which we're in deep, deep trouble from climate disruption was 2050. Their assessment in 2018 is that they got that wrong, it's 2030, 11 years from now. So, this is a urgent issue to be paying attention to, and that's why we bring this up. The, the idea at the most basic level is simply that if you have a sustainability coordinator, they can put all their efforts into a wide range of sustainability initiatives, and we'll talk about those as we go along, but municipal, residential, commercial, there's a lot of opportunity out there, and our contact with other towns with coordinators, the coordinators are doing quite a wide variety of things to address sustainability. So, what are we talking about? We're talking about a salary range for a full-time position, and what we're proposing is a half-time position or a part-time position, but the full-time salary range that we found out there was essentially 70,000, 80,000, everything from 43,000 to 108,000 from the towns we, we looked at, but the average was in the 70 to 80 range for a full-time position with benefits. The, the kind of startling thing that we found as we did our research was that through grants, incentives, and the savings from things that, you know, HVAC upgrades, et cetera, from grants, towns with coordinators have realized the annual return of approximately four times salary and benefits to 12 times salary, and that mixes because there's one substantial research report that has been done for Massachusetts, the Duffy-Capstone Energy Manager Report, and they looked at salary and benefits combined. Oftentimes, when we were polling coordinators in the area, they were just talking about times salary, which is why you have the difference of 12 at some point. But it's pretty startling when you think about it, you put $1 in, you get four back minimally, and potentially 12. So, the, the large level ROI is good, and we'll look at, at the return on investment a little more in detail. One of the things that the coordinator said almost unanimously was the best reporting relationship was through the town administrator, and that's simply because the ones we talked to, for instance, who were working through facilities or CM&amp;D type arrangements, got kind of siloed into that kind of work, and the other stuff that a coordinator could do to benefit the town and the residents just was harder to get to. Underneath the town administrator, they said routinely, what they found was that the scope could be expanded to really pick up on the kinds of goals that not just town departments, but residents and others in the town felt were important. The non-monetary return on investment is pretty strong as well, as we'll see.
Fred, did you say you were going to talk about where the ROI comes from?
Yes.
You provide some of the detail, okay, thanks.
Yes, and, and that's where we're going now, yes. So, a lot of the ROI comes from grants, grants and incentives. We went out and looked around to find out what are the grants that coordinators are using, and we are, you know, we're a volunteer group, we don't spend 20 hours or 40 hours a week on this, so this is not a comprehensive list of the grants that are potentially out there. Some of these we've been using, the Green Community Grants we've been using, and, and there's opportunity there as well. There are multiple sustainable material recovery, or MVP, vulnerability preparedness, and then there's just a, a bunch of other things. When we were talking to another group, they were interested in dams and repairing and removal of dams, and we found out, in fact, there's a grant for that out there. So, our point is simply that this is not an exhaustive list at all. We started with what NADAC has been doing, and they've been very active with, since 2014, when they hired Gillian Wilson Martin, and she's returned, last year, she returned 7.5 times her salary and benefits in bringing in grants and incentives and savings to the town. So, they're not an exhaustive list, but simply this is the type of place from which the funds will come to return that investment in a salary. And there are incentives and other things as well. Interestingly, NADAC lowered their tax burden by 200,000 in 2017, and I can quote what she said about that. She said those returns were from, and I quote, "A variety of utility incentives for energy efficiency projects from ever source." So, from one source, they were able to, to pull in enough to lower the tax burden. Also, when we talked to her, she said that's not a one-time event, that's been going on since 2014, when she was hired. This is just the most recent number for 2017. Are there other things? Textile recycling programs or composting recycling programs to avoid tipping fees, solar energy, metering revenue, and one of the things that we found with, from the coordinators, and what they said was, once reporting to the town administrator, then you can really also start looking at residential programs. Obviously, electricity aggregation is not just residential, it's also municipal, but it's there. Residential solar program, and I'm, I'm sorry, I meant to get the number for this, but NADAC has, through their Solarized NADAC program, for instance, I think it's in the 500 residential installations around the town. There is a map that Gillian put out that's pretty impressive, it's hard to actually see where the streets are, because there are so many little dots of, of solar installation. There's Mass Save, Mass Save for Seniors, a whole lot of other things as well. So, this is where a lot of the, the money comes back to the town through grants, incentives, and obviously the savings. If you use a grant to upgrade your HVAC, you're getting the return on that HVAC over time. There are also a large number of other advantages, some of which return monetary and some don't. There's just the partnering with Selectmen, there's volunteering, there's mass audit, education programs, recycling initiatives, solarization programs, aggregation programs, champion composting, food waste, rain-water reclamation, a couple of school-type programs, pesticide reduction, and we're running out of room, virtual net metering, and one that I personally feel very strongly about is that a coordinator can really help to overcome that perception by individuals that, hey, I'm just one person, makes no difference what I do, it's just drop in the bucket, no point in me doing anything about it. And that is patently false, you put enough drops in the bucket, you got a full bucket. But oftentimes, overcoming that is, is an important part of a coordinator's role. So, those are some of the advantages. We did go out, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but we, we got a question of, well, what towns have coordinators, and what towns have coordinators and energy commissions, and what towns are out there hiring? This list changes quite frequently, Framingham is on the "we are hiring" list, but in fact, they have hired. So, there's a lot of movement on this list, and again, this is in no way comprehensive. In fact, what interested us was there is no comprehensive listing of Massachusetts towns with coordinators, energy committees, or anything else. We brought that up to, to 350 Mass, which is an org, a kind of an umbrella organization that we're affiliated with, and they said, yeah, you're right, there's, there's nobody looking at that overall. So, the best data we have is the Duffy Report, and we'll be giving you a link to that at the end of the meeting. But there are a number of towns, some towns are sharing coordinators, Chelsea and Winthrop have been doing that, Born and Barnstable have been doing that, Arlington and Bedford intend to do that when they, when they get somebody hired, and they're in the hiring mode right now. Just a, a point of reference, that there are a number of towns out there, we looked at three counties, maybe 20% of the towns in those counties, and came up with this list, so extrapolate that out to all the counties in Massachusetts, and if it holds true, there are a lot of towns out there with coordinators. We also found there's a lot of interest in this. Concord put out a hiring notice, whatever you call that, and had over 200 applicants for their position. So, there's a lot of people out there looking to use sustainability coordination as their going-forward career, and therefore, there are people out there hungry for these positions, even if they're part-time, and even if they don't hold benefits. Number of towns, for instance, started with part-time, no benefits, 19.5 hours, so they went underneath the benefit threshold, and over time realized the value of this and actually have turned it into full-time positions with benefits. So, that's a point of reference. I did want to kind of go back to the Duffy Report, which is the most solid report we have. You will notice that the town names have been obscured, Ruby is not a town in Massachusetts, but that they put the names of towns and the people, for confidential reality reasons, disappeared those. But these are real towns.
That's Pineville.
Could be.
At least on the J. Thompson.
I've been guessing, I've been guessing all over the place about where it is from, Eric, but
I don't think this is a HIPAA violation.
I haven't deciphered the report yet, I have some ideas.
This is not a HIPAA violation, though, we're okay.
But, you know, from, from the Personnel Department, salary and benefits were largely paid in the first three years by Green Community Grants, and we have talked to a number of towns where that's been their approach, is to use some of the administrative allowance within a, a Green Community Grant to fund these positions partially or fully. From the Duffy Report, author himself, Neil Duffy, "It's unrealistic to believe that none of the grants or rebates or incentives would have been achieved without Lewis's, the coordinator's, in, in his absence," right? "But even if we make a conservative assumption that Lewis was only responsible for 17% of all the financial benefits listed, the city would still be making some money from the energy manager position." So, and 17% is highly conservative. If you have a full-time coordinator working, they're, they're having more of an impact than that. From Facilities Manager, Sean, I don't like this, "From my standpoint, my top priorities are to maintain clean and safe buildings, and maintain the equipment that we have, and obviously respond to emergencies. Identifying grants and looking for ways to save energy, I completely recognize, are extremely important to the town and to the bottom line, but this is just not an area I would typically put a lot of time into." And so, we go back to that idea that town officials have an awful lot of other work to do besides being a sustainability coordinator or pushing grants and, and incentives. And from one of the energy committee volunteers, "It was just night and day. Before the hiring of Thompson, when it came to energy efficiency initiatives, the city did not have a point person. They, the committee, would recommend things, but there was nobody to take it on and make it happen. There weren't, wasn't the organizational structure, there wasn't the expertise, and there wasn't a staff person who had the time to champion these ideas." And that goes back a lot to, from Upper Charles Climate Action's point of view, we've been working pretty hard on gathering data and trying to figure out what grants are out there and everything else, but we don't have the expertise, and we don't have a grant writer, for instance. We aren't part of the organizational structure of the town where someone reporting to David would be, and, you know, we're not staff. So, we've, we've found with a lot of energy committees, with a lot of citizen-action energy groups, that it's just hard to get things done without somebody dedicated to doing them. So, if we look at the overall benefits, just to summarize, we can significantly lower our carbon footprint with a, we're already working there, I don't want to take anything away from what Gino's already been doing, which is pretty impressive. However, we can do better, and unfortunately, if you believe what the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change said, we have to do better So, we found with a lot of energy committees, with a lot of citizen-action energy groups, that it's just hard to get things done without somebody dedicated to doing them. So, if we look at the overall benefits, just to summarize, we can significantly lower our carbon footprint with a, we're already working there. I don't want to take anything away from what Gino's already been doing, which is pretty impressive. However, we can do better, and unfortunately, if you believe what the International Government Panel on Climate Change said, we have to do better, and fairly quickly. We can realize a compelling return on salary, four to 12 times return on salary, even if, you know, wow, just four to 12 times return on salary, that's pretty impressive. This is a critical time-sensitive issue, and we need people who can focus on it and not overburden our town officials. And then, you know, the last two are a little bit rah-rah, but they're really important, that we really do continue to be seen as an active green community, and that we are seen as a leader in the movement of sustainability. So, that's our presentation. We do ask for your active support of the position, hopefully putting it into the budget for, the omnibus budget for the town, but if not, will, David's holding a warrant.
Please hold it.
Position for us, a hole for us to put the article in. We have the signatures, we have the article, and we'll be giving you that as well. So, that's where we're coming from. Any questions or concerns or thoughts or?
With your proposal as a part-time, how many hours would you propose this to start?
If we wanted to go without benefits, it'd be 19.5. And there are a number of towns that have done that. I think the draw is stronger with benefits, clearly, and there are a lot of hungry people out there. In part, I would love to see benefits come with it, simply because someone won't then just use this as a hopping point, coming out of college, using, doing it for two years and dropping us.
Just to follow up on that, have you talked to any neighboring communities that are looking to hire a part-time person, where you could hire somebody that could be split between?
We have.
Like Dover, I know I saw Milis or some other towns that are right near us.
Yes. We've been actively talking with Holliston, and part of the concern there is they're three times larger than we are, where they suck the air out of the room. Not if we set up the agreement well. We've talked to Arlington, we've had from Arlington and Bedford the actual agreement that they wrote between the two towns. Where does the person report to? How do they get paid? How does the bill back go to Bedford from Arlington? Because Arlington is the hiring entity.
Ashland's another town.
Right, I know, because I know some of our inspectors work in other town, like we have, that share services would need them in other towns like that, so.
What about Dover? Is there any interest in?
We're not sure.
We're not sure yet.
It was just named, it just received Green Community Designation, I think, last year.
Several years behind us.
Yeah, several years.
Yes, I just wanted to point that out.
So, there's, I mean, there's a.
That would be a nice, that would be a natural special, we share their high school.
There's a couple of models here, right? Because we've had, for years, we had a planner who worked, and maybe he still does, in Dover and Sherburne, but they weren't, it wasn't a shared position. It was two part-time positions, and you can do that also. And I would also say, I'm not quite sure I understand the logic of having either a budget item or a warrant article. I would think you'd want to have both, for a couple of reasons. One is if advisory recommends against the budget, and you don't have a warrant article, you've got nothing. And secondly, if you have the warrant article and you don't have a budget, then who, how are you paying them?
Yeah, exactly.
So, I would think you'd want to do it both ways.
Okay.
And I think we discussed that that's what we were going to find out tonight, whether we should just go one way or the other, so.
I'd like to go the easier route, which would be your budget for us.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you put something in the budget to fund a position that's not a position.
You have to create the position through the Personnel Board.
We take the job description.
But let me say on a sort of a broader basis, that I spend a fair amount of time at the State House, and people keep telling me that there is money available for Sherburne on a variety of things, and I've had some discussion with the Green Communities, state-side people, there's money, I know there's money there, and I have sent a fair number of memos to the town about contacts that have been made to me that, why doesn't Sherburne apply for this, and Sherburne apply for that? And maybe those are all being applied for, I'm not, this isn't meant to say one way or the other, but my sense is that there's money out there, that Sherburne is in a favorable position to tap into some of that money, because they're asking us to step up and claim the money, basically, and.
Paul, I would approach that a little differently, which is, we've been talking about a grants coordinator position for a long time, right? We've had this discussion at this table about the need to go after grants. You frequently bring it up, like you're doing now, and yet, we don't have, whether you call him a sustainability coordinator or just a grants coordinator generally, we don't have that position. Gino goes after grants, you know, Mike Lesser goes after grants, David goes after grants.
Aaron Kenny goes after grants.
Aaron Kenny, Rick Thompson, but it's done on an ad hoc basis, and if we could coordinate some of that under David, I think, you know, these four and 12-time returns seem realistic to me, actually.
Yes, yes. So, I would concur with what I think is the sense here, that yes, for your idea. Yes, hold one or two, an article and a budget item, and let's see where we can go with it.
The two hands of, oh, Jeff.
Well, I was just going to say, I would really vote for Dover, because regional schools probably one of the bigger facilities in town that's also in our focus, so I think it's not just happens in the partner, but they can affect the sustainability. Look at all the things going on, not just the high school and middle school, but also the grounds and the place around, so I would like to see your impact.
And the grants and programs have got to be very similar for both towns.
Right.
That is the advantage, because we're relatively the same size, and we're already connected.
Can you get those school buses where you have to pedal to make the thing move?
I would, yeah.
Well, the thing about getting somebody in Dover, I mean, it's a lot of work to find somebody that's as hungry about this as we are, or Holliston or.
I'm some misery in Sherburne, we meet with Dover Warren regularly.
Well, they need somebody to get behind us, because.
We can, UCCA will take on making a contact with Dover and seeing if they have any interest in that.
John Higley.
Thank you. Sherburne has an energy committee that has received about almost $300,000 worth of grants already. We take that money, we take the money we've gotten, we are active, we have, participate in the Mass Vulnerability Program, Mass Sustainability Program, in addition to the Green Communities. There's about 200, over 200 Green Communities in Massachusetts, all of which have energy committees required to it. So, when we started, we did our own solarized plan, it was grossly successful, but because we could not get an abutting community that had to have an energy committee to participate or be already a member of the Green Community, we did our own, and it was very successful. So, we have a lot of return on investment by the Green, by the work that's been done already. If we use that number, if I look at that number, we pay for our town planner better than five to one, based on the work that's been done. So, we're already doing this, but what I, but what I want to say is that the energy committee is made up of people that do, are on other boards and committees, and the bandwidth is low. So, I'm sure we're missing some opportunities, but we're also getting some opportunities. I think in our ROI, we need to look at what's been brought in already with essentially zero dollars towards a separate position, and then, and then look at the return on what's done. I just came from a SWAP, a MIPC meeting, talking about opportunities to regionalize. This is an ideal way to regionalize with multiple communities, not just Dover. But we, for instance, we tried to do the solarized program before, we tried for other grants, particularly with our regional school system, with the heating and cooling system. We weren't eligible because both communities need to be Green Communities, so only, only in the last year was that, we eligible for some of those big grants. The other thing is, we have some, when we get a grant, we got to finish that before we can apply for the next one. So, now that we have a, seeing.
Facility guy.
Yeah, now that we have a facility guy, you can, no, but I mean, seriously, we've got to finish those before we can get the next grant. So, so we're making admirable progress on those fronts. So, if, wherever the ROI is, if it's implementing the grants we do get, or certainly, the energy committee could use some energy, some more participants to get, to get more of these grants, but that's, I think, kind of, we should look at those things in perspective as well.
The library is also giving a lead to certain conditions.
And converted to gas, moving to the Green Community.
John? David, did you have something?
I was just going to say, Fred and I discussed every possible model that was out there, from contracting to actually having an employee, and, you know, sometimes you don't have a good match with the communities, and one community is always getting the grants, they're always seeing that community in the paper. So, it's, it's nice if we had it, like, in our own office, to see what the effect would be solely for Sherburne, and then grow it from there, but that's, that was mine.
And that's where our proposal does sit right now, is for a half, a part-time Sherburne, and then to look and say, okay, would other towns be interested? That's the approach we've taken, and we'll certainly.
You're bringing the position to the table, then you're, you're bringing something.
John?
I just want to caution against the, trying to jump down, whoa, with another town right away. I mean, you don't want to pigeonhole this in Dover being our partner, because we got to look out for Sherburne. The healthcare would be probably a good way.
Alicia?
Yeah, I just wanted to, this is not meant to exclude the energy committee in any way, but as John pointed out, right now, the committee, I think, consists of, I'm on it, four or five of us, Gino, Mike Lesser with Conservation, John with Planning, Greg Kennon, and so, it's difficult, people are stretched, but I think the vision would be that the coordinator would identify opportunities, and the energy committee could work across it with that person, which was initially, I think, envisioned when we first got designated to Green Community. There were 12 members on the energy committee way back when, 2011, 2010, whatever, and the idea was that they would work with department heads and be very active. Unfortunately, we're not able to be as active, I think, these days as those 12 people were.
Yeah. Well, Mike, I think your suggestion is a, is a good one about, I don't think these are mutually exclusive, and I think that, based on this presentation, that the town would support the creation of a new position, but I think it would also be helpful to get that, that support, so.
Chuck, you have one more for Debbie?
Yes.
Deputy tomorrow, Hollister. So, Mike, you're, you're on the idea that we should do both?
A warrant article and a budget? I kind of think you have to, just like Paul said, you can't, you can't pay for a position that hasn't been created.
Well, I mean, our next step would be talking to Personnel Board, Advisory, to get them on board. I mean, it's a lot of work to do both. And how can we, well, I guess Mr. Williams would help us.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm not suggesting it as a strategy, I just think you need to have a position in order to, in order to pay a salary, right? I mean, you could put something in the budget, but what does it fund? There's nobody who has that role.
Well, could the Personnel Department board?
They can't create, they can't create a position out of thin air, no. It's got to be, it's the beauty of town meeting, we all have to vote on whether to create a position or not. You got a better idea?
Same thing, but conceptually, I think you'd be amending the wage and classification plan.
Yeah, when we, when we create a position and fund it.
You don't necessarily need, so those would be the two articles, would be the budget and the amendment of the wage and classification.
So, that would be two articles?
Well, it would be the.
Well, it's a budget article and a substantive article, but I mean, I, we can, we can do that too, but I kind of like the way this is phrased, because it specifies the position we're creating, you know? I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I mean, the other way to do this is to define the conservation agent's role to include this task, or to define the planner's role to include this task, or some other existing position, and then increase the salary for that position to make that up, but that seems kind of awkward. You know, whether you call the sustainability coordinator, or grants coordinator, or, you know, energy efficiency person, whatever you want to call it, it seems, from the way you've described it, like it's got a discrete function, that we don't necessarily need to combine it with another position, but.
The budget warrant's going to be there no matter what, I mean.
Do you, I don't, when I said, talked to you the other day, we'll take care of pulling it through, and we'll let you know when you have to be there to help defend it.
But you've already got your town meeting presentation done, so you're like four months ahead of anybody else who's going to put an article on the warrant.
Right.
It's selling the idea, you know?
I don't expect, administratively, there's nothing to do. There are people who don't do this until the night before town meeting.
No, we won't do the voting of presidents.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the article as, as a campaign that we need to do to inform people, what is this thing? What's the return on it? Why would I want to vote for it?
The library might say they don't need to come to the library.
Yeah. Yes, we're aware of that, yeah.
But in the meantime, could I suggest that we do take a vote to ask that these two articles that Mike has mentioned be put on our list of articles to be considered?
Do we need to vote on that? I know last year, we talked about.
Not voting on it.
Not voting on.
Until we had, until we had the whole thing.
I think, I think let Mike work on a list, I mean, David's going to conclude this on a list, and then we can vote on them at once, so it's not disorganized, because I've seen in the past where we have.
Yeah, and I don't think you need to vote, I think the clear.
I think Paul wants a sense, a sense of the board that we, that we support continuing this effort. I mean, I'd be happy to vote on something like that.
Yes.
Just for that, it's not supporting it.
I'm not saying to adopt it today.
Right, that's right.
I'm saying to put it on a list that David should be maintaining, a list that we will look at with everything else.
And decide what we want to do about it, yeah, exactly. I would second Paul's motion on that.
So, it's looking favorable that you guys would support it.
Oh, we haven't said that, we're just, we're just supporting, putting it on a list at this point.
Keep working.
I brought, you know, page on 15, but I want you guys to say, oh, no action should be taken.
Well, you got to get through the whole process, that's the whole thing, but it's, to me, the way it's been presented, it seems like a good idea, and, you know, John's made some good points, so.
If you're not going to vote, then they don't need to worry about the petition wrote.
That's right.
Any further discussion up here? All in favor?
The motion?
Okay, great. So, you got unanimous preliminary support to push this thing forward.
To put it on the list.
Good, thanks a lot. You spent a lot of time on that presentation, thank you for doing that.
Thank you for all the work.
The article text is in this package as well, and if you want access to the Duffy Report or the International Governmental Climate Change, there's a way to get that as well. The Duffy Report gives you the meaning, you know, the assessment and the policymaker's summary are in, on the website.
And thank you for dropping that footnote.
What was it saying?
No, I mean, it is, right, right.
Thank you for your time.
It's the footnote that the non-ROI, the other advantages, are also the pieces that contribute to the ROI. They do both. Terrific, okay, Town Administrator Report?
Nothing.
Selectman reports, I have a brief one, but I'll go last.
Eric and I have one, but I'm going to let Eric talk on 41 North Main Street. You want to give yours?
No, I'll go last.
Yeah, so, as you know, George and I have been in communication and meeting with the developer at 41 North Main, try to, you know, work out some of the issues, and they proposed something which I think is a general concept that's at least worth pursuing in further detail. I know there's a lot of issues there with the downtown utilities, and, you know, water and our sewer are both, in some fashion, and some initial pushback that I gave, prevented me from recommending it, is, one, they shouldn't expect the town to build anything. The town, you know, we love capital projects, and we're so good at them. And so, there was some initial pushback there, and shouldn't expect the town to basically cut them a check in any fashion, shouldn't contribute financially, at least not initially to it. And they presented a proposal, which actually involved them constructing the water and sewer, but in perhaps also in consideration of some tax rate relief. You know, it's not unusual to give tax rate relief for no reason, with nothing in return, you know, to promote certain development. It's a pretty common model, where on year one, the taxes are the same as pre-development taxes, and it incrementally increases to full assessed value after so many years.
TIP.
Yeah, TIP, yep, exactly. So that, yeah, so they would pay for.
I think we call them TIPs in Massachusetts.
But I think, we just, we just wanted to bring it up, that they brought this to our attention like last week, and I'd like to see if we can get them on the agenda for the 20th, to make a presentation on what they're thinking.
Great idea.
Yep, exactly. Because I think they're going to want to get on the town meeting in the spring.
I like it.
For this project.
Exactly, in concept, it seems like a good idea, actually allow them to utilize the system initially, the town can then hook up, or downtown can hook up, when it's ready.
the system initially, the town can then hook up, or downtown can hook up, when it's ready.
And it wouldn't cost the town anything initially.
If anybody comes into contact before we do, we've been trying to get in touch with them for a week or so.
I can email, I'll email them and have them get in touch with you about getting on the meeting for the 20th.
I have the cell phone number too, if you want that.
Okay. Is that?
Gary.
Terrific. I had one idea.
We all do.
Our last meeting, we were talking about the conservation restriction and the grant to the trustees of reservation. George raised the question about the impact on taxes, and Mike pointed out that, you know, there's lots of things we need to fund. I would like in the future, when we consider these, to actually include that as a piece of it. It's, it's not just the issue, I'd like to see what the numbers are, what the effect are on taxes, because there's clearly a trade-off. There's a benefit to the town, there's a benefit to the owner, there's a benefit to the trustees of reservation, but I think it's part of our duty to understand the financial impact, so that, that's the only.
Thank you.
Comment that I wanted to make. Terrific. We're going to go into executive session and not to return.
I thought we were going to return potentially.
Well, maybe.
It says may return.
It says we may return. I thought we decided we didn't need to.
Oh, I don't know what you're saying.
I don't think you need to.
I don't think we need to.
Sound like Charlie on the MB2.
Yeah. We're going to adjourn to executive session, the board may return to public session, I don't think that's likely, however. The executive session is under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, subsection A. We're in subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, agreement negotiations, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the chair does so declare. CM and D, Union, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation of the position of the town, subsection seven, for the purpose of complying with any general or special law, specifically, general law, Chapter 214, Section 1B, right to privacy, and I do so declare. This requires a roll call vote.
Checkpoint, order. Do you think you're going to return? Because I'm actually going to engage in the first discussion, or accuse myself of the second discussion item, so should I wait outside if you're going to return, or can I leave?
If we are returning to.
I think just as a matter of courtesy to our listeners, and to the public, and to the reporter, we really ought to decide that now. Just leaving it open-ended with, without anybody knowing is.
Yeah, I don't think we need to return to open session.
Nice.
From a legal perspective, there's no need to return.
Yeah, I don't think so either, so we will not return to open session. Thank you, Eric.
And I just, to close, obviously, what I'm going to do.
Terrific.
And I had a question before we wrote this for Town Council. You've looked at this, and that's last executive session about the right to privacy, you've looked at this, and you're okay with it, you approve it as a form?
Yeah, I think you had the subsection sort of after each item, but yes, it's written entirely correctly.
This was, Chapter 214, Section 1B, right to privacy.
Yes, correct.
You're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Terrific, I need a, so the board will not return to open session, I need a second and a roll call vote. Motion is seconded by Mr. Giamo. Having a second will not have a roll call vote, Mr. Durensis? Mr. Yon, yes? Mr. Giamo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Having passed by a vote of five to zip, to zero, the open session is now closed, and we will not be returning to open session. We are now in executive session.